Okay, Stacy, we're gonna open the room and then as soon as it fills with however you can start.
All right. I'm gonna call the meeting to order on the Tuesday, March 8, 2022. I'm calling this public hearing. Open at, I just lost the timer, 5:32 PM. This is for the A through G completion improvement grant program. This is a special meeting on this topic. I'm gonna go ahead and start with the pledge of allegiance. Eleanor Evans, would you go ahead and lead us in the pledge, please?
I will be honored to do so. If you're able to stand, please stand. Ready, begin. I pledge allegiance to the United, to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. You may be seated.
Thank you, trustee. Evans, all right, so this is a public hearing. We are going to have a presentation from Dr. Lovey. After the presentation, I will take any public speakers. I believe we may have a few. And this is not a voting item and we have a regularly agenda for our next meeting that starts at 6:00 PM. So I'll turn it over to Dr. Lovey.
Good evening, Board of Education. It gives me great pleasure to be able to share with you the opportunity we have to share our A through G completion improvement grant plan. This plan is a special funding opportunity for our district to help our high school students be prepared for college entrance. To share this plan with you, I will turn it over to Dr. Lawrence, our executive director of secondary education. Dr. Lawrence?
Thank you. Good afternoon, governing board president, Begin, trustees, superintendent vitality, executive cabinet, and the greater Oceanside Unified School District community. This evening I present to you information on the A through G completion improvement grant. Next slide, please. The A through G completion improvement grant was created as a result of Assembly Bill 130 as a way of supporting local school districts to increase the number of students who graduate from high school, meeting A through G requirements. This plan will be updated and presented each spring through the 25-26 school year to present the progress being made in the areas presented within this plan. The A through G completion improvement grant fund is made up of two grants. One is the A through G access grant awarded to school districts with an A through G rate of 67% or below. From this grant, we were awarded $892,489. In addition, we received $334,590 from the A through G learning loss mitigation grant. The combination of these two grant awards were awarded Oceanside a total of $1,227,079 in total grant funding. Each district in California received a combination of the A through G learning loss mitigation grant along with either the A through G access grant or A through G success grant, which was awarded to districts with an A through G graduation rate of 67% or higher. This is a one-time fund that is to be used by the close of the 25-26 school year. Next slide, please. The A through G requirements are the minimum admission requirements to the University of California, University, state universities. It is also a metric used for entrance into state university schools as well. It is called the A through G requirement as each subject area is assigned a letter category. For example, A is associated with history requirements and B associated with English. Our current graduation requirements guide our students towards the completion of these A through G requirements. Students fall out of meeting A through G requirements in multiple ways. One of the major ways is by receiving a grade of a D in any other required courses that fall within the A through G requirements or not completing required courses. Next slide, please. Currently with the class of 2021 as a whole, 48.9% of graduates in the class of 2021 met the A through G requirements. This is slightly under the state average of 52.14. Next slide. However, as you can see, there was a steady growth increasing the rates of A through G completion. As many districts experienced a decline in 2021 due to COVID, the state recognized this and implemented this grant to refocus attention on this work of improving A through G rates. During the COVID, the focus statewide was on holding students harmless and supporting students to graduate. This was also done through Assembly Bill 104, which provided students who are behind in credits with the opportunity to graduate meeting the state minimum graduation requirements, waiving courses which would be a requirement of the A through G requirement. This in turn would show a decline in the A through G rate for those students who would graduate under AB 104 and that would show in both the class of 2021, the A through G completion rates and that of the class of 2022. Next slide, please. To continue to support our students, we would use these grant funds to build upon professional development for teachers, administrators, and counselors to improve A through G completion rates, including a advanced placement specific training for our teachers, comprehensive advising plans and other student support such as tutoring, four-year plans, and college counseling services, expanding access to A through G coursework through course development and review, increasing access to AP classes with support for English learners and students with developed disabilities, supporting student test fees for unduplicated pupils, expansion of partnerships with post-secondary institutions, and increased efforts to reduce D and F rates through monitoring strategic course offerings, support staff, and other engagement intervention opportunities with increased credit recovery options outside of just Apex courses, but enhanced courses with teachers. Next slide, please. We will monitor the pan through a focus on the percentage of students meeting A through G requirements upon graduation with our baseline of 48.87% with the class of 2021, a focus on the number of current senior students on track to meeting A through G requirements and the percentage of students enrolled in A through G courses as well as a percentage of students in A through G courses that are a C or better. And the, those in blue are our baseline. At this time, next slide, please. I want to thank you for this information and I'm open for any questions at this time.
Do we wanna do questions or do you wanna do public comment first, Dr. Begin?
Let's see if we have any public comment first. Thanks, Eric. Anne, I know we had two. Are they in?
Yes, we have two, Patrick and Rosie Higera.
That was super.
Greg, do you see them?
Dr. Begin, neither Patrick nor Rosie Higera are in the room.
Okay, well then we'll go to questions and we'll see if they show up.
I want you to know if I see.
All right. All right, so no public comment is here yet. All right, so does anybody have any questions for Dr. Lawrence or Dr. Lovey?
Can we pull the slide back up, the last, second to last slide? Why would a student not be enrolled in the A through G courses?
There are a number of reasons why a student may or may not be on the A through G track. So it may not be a matter of them not being enrolled in the A through G courses. It may be a matter of the students either getting a D or an F in the class that exempts them from meeting the A through G requirements or as I've stated before, because of AB 104, they have courses waived that are not part of the A through G requirements. So as a result, for example, a student is to complete four years of English with the AB 104. They can exempt or waive one English year to meet the state minimum requirements of three years. So as a result of that, they are would necess, not necessarily meet those requirements. In addition, you have some students programmatically, students with disabilities that are on a different track with regards to course completions and other students who are homeless or foster youth who are also exempt to meet the state requirements as well for graduation rates.
So that's that 24% in that third figure that's not enrolled, okay. I'm a little concerned when I go back a couple of slides and you don't have to, but comparing our data to the state data, the go one more. No, I'm sorry, the other direction one more. Yeah, the state data went, they're, they're 52, they went up in 2021 and we went down. That's, I don't know, that's concerning to me. I don't know if we have any insight into that. Do we have, I saw there's a lot about APs. How does that, how would that training support our, our students getting in the A through G? How is AP related to A through G? I'm sorry, is the elementary school teacher wanting to look into my future? How does the AP and A through G alignment, how does that, how do they interact?
Oftentimes, when we're thinking about A through G progress, it is also the, looking at the expansion of AP offerings, which puts students on the track to meeting A through G requirements and college interest requirements. Oftentimes, this is an area where we do look at and see which groups are represented in these classes and ensuring that those underserved groups are represented in the school populations. In addition, there is one thing that we need to think about as we think about the A through G rate. In this Surfside Academy became a high school just last, I mean, just had a high school component and became a school last year. That 12.5% also is something that is factored in that brings us down a little bit as they're continuing to grow in this area. So as we think about this, it also talks about the attrition of a new program onboard, but is it now a new school? It was once a program, now it is a school. It wasn't a factor before.
Okay, so with this money being temporary, would we hire any new staff to do this work?
At this time, that will be something that we still would be exploring, but however it is, since it is temporary money, we cannot allocate permanent staff to it.
So, I, go ahead. So one of the things that we're thinking about is how do we leverage the staff we currently have and see how we can ensure that we provide the extra sections that students might need. So if a student receives a D or an F in a course, that we provide them with additional opportunities to make that up because you can change that grade from a D to a C or better and be able to then become A through G eligible or, I guess, endorsed. And the other thing we're looking at is looking at working with possibly some of our retirees to be looking at the transcripts. We do have students who are coming in also from all over the country into Oceanside, both military-connected families and families that are not military-connected. And A through G is a specific thing only for California. So sometimes when a student comes in, they may not be on track for, they're on track for graduation, but because the requirements are slightly different here in California versus another state, that may also impact some of the students being on track or even finishing in that pathway. Not a pathway, but in the A through G compliant.
I just, it feels like they're over, overmatched and for it, if we can't get to 50% of our kids graduating eligible for UC, I don't know. It just seems like we're missing something or maybe there's an intervention that's not happening early enough in their high school career. Stacy, you're gonna bring something up. Sorry, I didn't mean to interrupt.
No, 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 all good points. Having a son going into high school, I have, I'm asking more questions than you are sometimes. Um, I, I have, I think this is great. I'm so excited. Anytime we get money to use for students and support teaching and learning, it's great. My only concern is all of these things for A through G fall on our high school counselors, a lot of them do. And our high school counselor ratio is really high. So I don't know what we're gonna do to address this because our high school counselors do academic counseling, but we're coming out of a pandemic here and anyways, I, I'm always concerned about students' social, emotional learning needs and addressing those on top of the academics, supporting the whole child to be able to bring these graduation rates up. So I don't know if that's part of the consideration is looking at the, our high school counseling ratio, student to counselor.
Really need to look at is the elementary and middle school. Students need to, need to be presented, since we have a higher proportion of underrepresented students compared to statewide. They need to be presented with the idea of A through G and what's it about and why it's important so that they can start, because they can start setting goals and we can support those goals. And it should not be the first day in high school and suddenly you hear about A through G requirements and what's needed. It needs to start literally no later than sixth grade and maybe third, third grade or even first grade, talking to them about college and what's required to get there. I know so many times students have asked me, well, how do you get to college? You know, what do you have to do? And they're in high school. That should, that's the thing they should have hacked years and years ago.
We completely agree. At some point is, can any of this money be used to be able to help that communication happen sooner? Because if, the sooner the, because at third grade usually I think in our school systems here is that that students begins to change, they understand differently, they're learning differently and they're getting things differently. So at that third grade level, if we're able to start communicating and having these conversations about what it is the goals are, because I know as a parent, we were already doing that with our son of, like, this is what we need to do. But even when he got into high school, he was like, uh, oh yeah, we did talk about that and now it means something, but at least he had already heard about it. But not every parent is gonna do that, but at some point that needs to happen so that they have an understanding, so that they know what they're working for. And but what are we getting, what can we do as a school district to support that happening? To support the teachers and the staff to be able to have that communication.
You know, we could do something, something like just giving each student a passport or a pathway in, in terms of what they're gonna do each year and include A through G. Now with the regards of what their career goals are, at least are aware, you know, I know, a career pamphlet where they fill out the courses and they see, you know, what, which direction they can go.
That's interesting. I was hearing in, in one of the committees we were in earlier this week about a ninth grade course in, at El Camino that is like geared towards success skills and entrepreneurship. Do we have, do ninth graders take in like an orientating class when they come into high school that that works on awareness, that works on these kind of issues and gets them thinking ahead because their brains obviously aren't.
Well, that's, yeah, that's avid, but I'm talking about something before, even before avid, okay? And I know I used to make up a thing with my students in terms of what they needed for each year. And that was when I was in an elementary school teacher. I, I don't know, I think entrepreneurship and career education needs to start, needs to be brought back in, at the elementary level. You know, some kind of way it's gone by the wayside or, or whatever.
And we, we look at the mentality of like what BizTown is to kids. I went to BizTown today. And so you look at everything that they did there, everything that they're learning that they had to learn before they got in to go in to do BizTown. So all the prep work that was how, that had to be done, all the communication that was done by the teachers and the staff that was done prior to them going. So that communication was happening and things were being done prior to that. So that same thought process and that same communication is happening about A to G stuff to prep them and to have an understanding, because just like you're talking about the passport that, because they're gonna change 20 times before they even get into high school. And then when they even get into high school, they're gonna be, they're gonna think one path, the ninth grade year. But by the time they're starting to register for their 10th grade classes, the mentality completely changes because like my kid just did that to me. So it's just a whole different thing of the, but at least they're looking and they're prepping themselves and then they're kind of thinking ahead like Eleanor was saying about what they need to be looking at to be able to get to that point. But again, going back to having that put into their head already by, by teachers, by counselors. But it goes back to again, the counselors are overloaded, like completely overloaded. Because it takes a lot to get a kid to get in to see a counselor, for them to give them the time and the effort that they really need because there's so much going on, especially right now with the dynamics of COVID of the, and, and them dealing with just all the social, emotional and all the craziness that's going on with that already. So these students right now are gonna already struggle, but these fifth graders and third graders around there are gonna struggle a little bit more, I think, and wondering and how into prep and how to do things because they, they miss some, some key things, especially our fifth graders. They miss those key two years of when they, they're transitioning, they're changing and things are happening. They didn't get that support like other, like their peers before them did. So what can we do, especially with that group now, to be able to support them as they're going into junior high to prep them to understand that, look, this is what's gonna be happening, this is what, what you need to know and this is the way it works. So with this, this grant, is there something that we can do to be able to help them along with that? I know it puts a lot more on somebody, but.
We are so open. These are a phenomenal array of ideas and it follows the alignment to our portrait of a graduate work. When we had our student summit and we brought our students forward, they talked about the importance of knowing what the future would bring for them, being prepared to enter the workforce into becoming productive adults to understand the challenges that they're going to be facing. And Dr. Lawrence and I have been talking about that and the feedback that you're providing to us is really important. So as we look at the grant, we can definitely set aside funding to be specifically targeted to early exposure to college career and to really bridge that gap because we all know students, they just say, oh, I'm gonna go to college. But to understand the path from where they are today to where they need to be so that they can attend college, both a community college, a four-year university, a private university, be prepared for all of those things. And Dr. Lawrence came up with a wonderful idea about preparing our ninth graders for this. And, and Dr. Lawrence, you wanna talk about that, what we're thinking about for next year?
One of the areas that we're thinking about and from, and it was also from the graduate portrait work is making sure that we have workshops for students during our times in which maybe the week that we're off in February that are specialized and focused in the areas that the students are requesting. Students are wanting to hear information about what does it mean to be successful as a, as a person who owns a home? What does it mean to pay taxes? What does it mean to have good credit, things of that nature? So those are things that we're going to build in, in terms of support. In addition, we will also have nights with our, for our students with regards that talk about FAFSA, that talk about the needs for completion for our A through G rates. One of the areas that we will continue to focus on, and that is important as part of the A through G, not just exposure and knowledge about colleges, but it is habits of mind and understanding the impact of a D in terms of a grade, the getting at the middle school level. Oftentimes, sometimes our teachers will say, or at the, our students will say, well, that's still passing at the middle school level. And then they bring that mentality over at the ninth grade level and then try and adjust within that first year and you'll see those rates. So it's trying to get them exposure and working with that. So we will be working with also our middle schools in this work and effort for exposure and understanding.
And with our counselors at every site, it's something that we can definitely work with them about, our elementary counselors as well because they've been focusing on social, emotional learning. But when we look at the full menu of counseling services that they provide, academic counseling is a piece and getting the students ready. So this is really exciting that we have this funding and appreciate it. There's not a vote now, there'll be a vote in the next session. And your yes vote on this will allow us to accept the money and again, use it over the next few years. And again, we have an annual plan and we want to continue to develop it. Much like many things during COVID, the state launched this funding to us in a very speedy manner, said get a preliminary plan together. So this is what we are best thinking. But as we bring our stakeholders together, as we bring in our families and our students and we learn more about our graduate portrait work, we look at our current reality with our equity audit, we'll be able to refine the work even more. So this is great news and we really appreciate the questions and feedback because it does help to shape our work.
All right. Well, thank you, Dr. Lawrence and Dr. Mercedes for bringing this great news to us. There's no vote right now and our regular scheduled meeting starts in about three minutes. So do we have any follow-up questions at this point?
Yeah, will we, we receive a more filled out plan later this year or will it be next year that we'll see it?
The state is still working on approving the template. Once that is approved, we will be sending that to you.
Perfect, thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, everyone. So we're gonna take a three-minute break and we'll be back at 6:00 PM for our regular board meeting. This meeting is adjourned at 5:57 PM. Yes, Eleanor. Yes, Eleanor. All right. Welcome, everyone. It is 6:02 PM. Sorry, we're a couple of minutes late. This is the regular meeting for March 8th. 2022 Board of Education Regular Meeting. I'm going to call the meeting to order at 6:02 PM. I'll do a quick roll call. I'm here, Stacy Begin. Trustee Alvarez. Thanks. Trustee Mike Blessing.
Here.
Trustee Eric Joyce.
I'm here.
Excellent. And trustee Eleanor Evans.
Here.
Excellent. Great. So we're going to go ahead and start off with the pledge of allegiance. And trustee Evans so graciously offered to say the pledge of allegiance for us.
Yes. Good evening, everyone. If you're able to stand, please stand. Please put your right hand over your heart. And if you're a veteran, you're wearing a head covering, you may continue to wear your head covering. If you're not a veteran. Please remove your head covering. Ready. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God. Indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Please be seated.
Thank you, trustee Evans. Moving on to our next item, item C, public report out of action taken in closed session. Item 1C expulsion of student, one case, education code 35146 and 489818. The board unanimously voted to expel student ID number 1026916 for two semesters. March 9th, 2022 through December 16th, 2022. Student will be eligible to return on January 9th, 2023. Our next item. Of action taken in closed session is item 1D. Conference with legal counsel on existing litigation, one case, government code 549. 56.908H case number 2021120101. The board voted 5-0 to ratify a settlement agreement reached by parties in the OHA case number. In which the district agrees to fund placement in a non-public school, compensatory education expenses, attorney fees and resolve all issues. In dispute regarding the 2019, 2020 and the 2020, 21 school year. And all prospective claims for the remainder of the 2021, 22 school year. All right, moving on to one of my favorite parts of the meeting, student representatives. So we have our three high school students. And we're going to go ahead and start out with Surfside High School, Evan Hemmerly. Hi Evan, how are you?
I'm good. How are you?
Great. Tell us all the good things going on at Surfside.
Good evening, school board members, Dr. Vitale and guests. My name is Evan Hemmerly and I'm the student representative for Surfside Educational Academy this evening. Congratulations go out to our February Students of the Month. Angel Gomez-Galavon was chosen from Surfside High School and Pablo La Rosa was chosen from Surfside Academy. Both students received a certificate of recognition and a Surfside T-shirt. Surfside teachers and staff selected Angel and Pablo from the list of nominations. Both students were nominated based on their academic growth, their accountability to self, self-correction and overall outstanding students. Great job, Angel and Pablo. Angel Gomez-Galavon was also selected as the March recipient of the City of. Oceanside Chamber of Commerce Rising Star Award. Angel, a Surfside senior, is known for being a young man who treats everyone with respect. Despite some challenges, he has pursued to the goal of graduation. Surfside Educational Academy welcomes Liz. Liguamo, counselor with Maricosta College. Liz is working as an extension of Maricosta three days a week with our students. She is assisting them and providing information regarding class enrollment, dual enrollment. Certification and associate degree offering, students support and much more. We thank Liz for her work with our Surfside Sharks. On Wednesday, March 2nd, our students had the opportunity to listen to Marty Anderson with the. Associate General Contractors of America to share about the construction industry. He coordinates the apprenticeship program in San Diego and students can earn while they learn. Which is one huge benefit to this great program. Other benefits are regularly salary increase as you learn new skills. Supervise on-the-job training, classroom instruction and opportunity for promotion. For more information, please visit the website at www.agscsdat.org. Thank you and have a good evening.
Thank you, Evan. All right, our next student is Gabby Kimbrell from Oceanside High School. Hi Gabby.
Hi, good evening. I'm Gabby Kimbrell and I'm OHS's ASB president. Thank you for having me, board and superintendent Dr. Vitale. So our past events that I'm going to be talking about is our Spirit Week, our Winter Pep Rally, our Snowball. President's Week and our competition team. So our Snowball Spirit Week, Monday was PJ Day, Tuesday was Animal Print Day, Wednesday was Camo Day. Thursday was Iconic Duo Day and Friday we had our class colors. So the colors that we picked matched our theme to our. Dance and our dance was enchanted for us. So seniors wore black, juniors wore white, sophomores wore purple and freshmen wore pink. Sorry. Oh, our snowball was at the Vista Optimist Club. It was from six to 10. We want to congratulate our. We have nine, sorry, 85 honoring graduates and more to come since the record of 2015. Um, next page. Our very own competition team, we traveled to Las Vegas, Nevada. February 10th through the 13th and we competed against at least 50 different teams and we placed fourth out of all of them. Um, the next page. Awesome. Our pep rally, our pep rally for our snowball spirit week was. Outside, we wanted to do a more inclusive theme, so we had. The home side of the bleachers where all the students sat and all of the action happened down on the field. Awesome. Yeah, I already talked, our snowball was at the Vista Optimist Club and there was about a 400 people that attended. Okay, what we've been up to. So we have New Pirate Day and Night, which is tomorrow. I'm going to be talking about some of our sports and our events. New Pirate Day, which is tomorrow. This is where we welcome our eighth graders from a middle school. Just show them the pirate life, what high school is going to be like, why they should go there. We talk about our pathways, classes that you can take, clubs that you can join and sports that you can join. We have a pirate night, which parents can come, also hear about the information as well. Our sports, we want to congratulate our girls basketball team. They finished with the avocado league unbeaten. Their banner just ordered and will be hanging up soon in our gym. Girls' water polo competitive cheer, boys and girls' basketball and boys and girls'. Soccer have just finished their season. Our track, baseball, softball, boys golf, boys volleyball just began their season. Our show choir traveled to Burbank. They placed second and. When they finished, super proud of them. It was their first competition of the year. Oh, and what's on the horizon? We have our testing and our block schedule, which we started on Monday. I'll give more information on how New Pirate Day and Night went next month. And we have spring break coming up. Thank you for having me. And that's all. Thank you.
Thanks, Gabby. My son's going to New Pirate Day tomorrow, so that should be fun. All right, the, our last student speaker is Liliana Tita from El Camino High School.
Hi. All right. Good evening, everyone, and thank you to board president, Doc, Ms. Dr. Biggins and the rest of the board members, to superintendent Dr. Vitality. Her executive staff and all who are present this evening for giving me the time to speak. My name is Lily Tita. I'm the ASB president and student representative from El Camino High School. Starting off with the week of January 31st through the 4th, ASB had karaoke during lunch on Friday and gave kids opportunity. To show off their skills. Girls and boys basketball senior night was February 4th. Senior Naraya Smith hit her 1,000th point during the game. Our varsity girls players also finally got the CIF rings from the 2019 to 2020 season. Our athlete of the week for this week was Isaiah Pomeroy from the boys varsity basketball team. The following week of February 7th through 11th. Pals put on a cloud-catching lunchtime activity where our students got a whipped cream, principal Fraser and their teachers. All levels of academic team had a clean sweep Thursday night against Bohemian Park. Our team students got the opportunity to talk with Mayor Sanchez. Boys and girls soccer had their senior nights this week and girls soccer beat Oceanside for the Battle of the Board and beat. Boys beat Vista High. Our girls cheer team volunteered at a prom for special needs, young adults. Night to shine at North Coast Church. And the athlete of the week this week was Mackenzie Cosina, a senior on varsity girls' basketball. Continuing the week of February 14th through the 18th. On Valentine's Day, the National Honor Society had a mock marriage ceremony fundraiser fully stocked with ring pops. We celebrated Valentines and Snowball with our winter week spirit days. Our pep rally revealed our snowball court and acknowledged winter sports. Saturday, we had our snowball dance at the Center of Arts in Escondido. This week, Band Orchestra also had an awesome winter performance. A rising star this month was Nizo. Nia was recognized by the Oceanside Chamber of Commerce. For rising above the circumstances she faced as a new immigrant to the US, right in the midst of a pandemic knowing no English. On February 17th, students from the Black Student Union, as well as several students from ethnic studies classes. Also had an opportunity to attend the Black College Expo down in San Diego. The exposition had a great opportunity for students to get connected with historically black colleges and universities and potentially gain additional options for college. Some students were offered scholarships and admissions right there on the spot during this expo. Thank you to Dr. Lawrence and Maya Schow William for your support with the organization and transportation for the event. Here are some highlights of our athletics at EC. Our girls' basketball went undefeated in league and won the North County Coastal League championship. They then went on to play in the D1 CIF championship versus Bishop Montgomery, but sadly came up short 57 to 43. Girls' water polo ended their great season with an overtime and sudden death during their semifinal game in a tough loss against Claremont. Our wrestling team brought the city championship cup back to Wildcat country with a win over CHS. Boys soccer victoriously won league for the first time ever in 41 years. Boys volleyball won the cross-ton rival game, beating Oceanside 3 to 0 and they also held their annual.
Uh oh, did we lose her?
Yeah, I think something happened with the volume.
All right. Ah, you're doing such a good job, Liliana. All right, moving on to item 2E, approval of agenda. I'll entertain a motion to approve our last board meeting agenda. I have a motion and a second. Any questions, comments? All right, I'll call for the vote. All in favor of approving our agenda, say aye.
Aye.
All right, motion carries 5-0. Moving on to item three, reports. I'll turn it over to Dr. Vitale for the superintendent's report.
Just a couple of updates, but first it's always so exciting to hear what our students are involved with. So I really appreciate them putting together those very thorough. Presentations of what keeps them busy between meetings. So just a couple of reminders to the Board of Education that the mask mandate ends in the state of California. For K-12 schools and as of March 14th, which is Monday, masks are optional. We will still be providing masks for anyone who wishes to wear a mask. And our next meeting, which is our board workshop on March 22nd, will be in person. And then we anticipate all subsequent meetings being in person as well. With our next regular board meeting on April 12th. So we look forward to being back in person. And looks like we're on the way to some normalcy and very excited about that. So with that, we can move forward to our board reports.
Great. Thank you, Dr. Vitale. All right, we'll start with Eleanor Evans tonight.
Been really active and involved in. Great many committees with the district and with the community. The one. Program committee. Event that I really would like to share is Portrait of a Graduate. Because it was the opportunity for the community, parents, faculty, staff, students and scholars and stakeholders. To come together to structure. Oceanside Unified School District's vision for the 21st century. With skills, character traits, as well as social, emotional competency. All of our students will need to succeed in college, in career, in life. And. It was a, it's a phenomenal program that we're going through. It's, it goes beyond. Transformational learning or educational reform. It's because we have students involved, we have the community involved, we have parents involved, we have faculty involved. We have staff involved. And. This is the time where we can empower, enable our students and prepare them to be. Really successful individuals in the 21st century. Thank you. I also want to make a comment about the American General, American General Contractors Association. That visited Surfside High School. That is a phenomenal program in that they, they do provide students with the skill. But they, they also provide scholarships and it's a. Earn while you learn kind of situation. And once you're in the union or. You're on, you're on the job site, you're constantly learning and it's an opportunity to even get a four-year degree. Because many of the organizations do have a college. And that's, that's recognized. So thank you.
Eleanor, I'm going to turn it over to Eric Joyce.
Evening, everyone. Went to a couple of things over the last month, some basketball games, Surfside basketball team was really fun to watch. And then I went to the OHS girls' basketball game where their, their playoff game, which was a gut-wrenching, gut-wrenching loss. They, they were so fun to watch that it was really. It was really a great atmosphere and it felt like being on a real high school campus again, which was pretty cool. We're celebrating Women's History Month. So in that vein, I have been thinking a lot about the people and the women that. Really inspire me and Shirley Chisen was, is one of those. And one of my favorite Shirley Chisen quotes is that service is the rent that you pay for the room on this earth. So I'm just gonna give a shout out to all the awesome women that really carry schools on their back, and she was an educator as well.
We thank you, Eric.
All right, thanks. All right, moving on, Raquel Alvarez.
Okay, um, yeah, let's see. I was busy. I was actually busy because things are getting back to normal. I'm kind of, I'm back to my new normal, whatever that is, because that was never normal, right? So I had the honor, thanks to Mr. Zimmerman and Ms. Mariani to go to Biz Town today with San Luis Rey Elementary. And that was awesome. I love seeing the kids, their interaction, the hard work they put into everything. And so everything that they learned and prepped to get to this point, to see that, to see them in action was always, is always fun because then you see the, the, the work that they put into it and everything that they've done all along, just actually now in play. So thank you for that, because again, it's, it's wonderful to see them all again interacting. I was walking around with TC this week and the last couple of weeks, actually just talking with students, seeing how they're feeling, things that are going on, the social emotional part of the different things that they're, you're dealing with. So thank you to them for just letting me just hook up with students and talk to them just openly and freely. I want to put a shout out to Gear Up. They gave an opportunity to a lot of our families, the students that, that participate with Gear Up After School Tutoring Program that they offer up at our schools. They were able to go over the weekend to the Safari Park. So they were able to go as family, so um, they were, it was a grant that they were able to get, and so they were able to bless our families with that. So that was awesome to see just families coming together, going out and spending time together. And, and it was just great to see. I went to a safety and security meeting, just kind of looking at everything that's going on just because the different things that are going on within our schools and just talking about the different things that we have and how we start to prepare for even just the rest of this year and what next year is going to look like and everything that's going on. I'm still working on the food pantry at OHS and trying to make that an amazing thing to just go for our students in our community. Was able to go to the city of Oceanside. I went to an ad hoc meeting with the Parks and Recs people and just had a, a great conversation about just different things that are going on within our community and different needs that are going on even for our after-school teams and our, our families and our students that, you know, just to keep them outdoors and get them outdoors and being active again. I went to the OHS volleyball against EC game, and I sat on both sides because that was hard. Because it's hard to, when I love both schools, I have to sit on both sides. So I sat once, a little bit for EC on one side for a little bit, and then I had to go to the OHS because that's where my kid goes. So I have to celebrate them and live on them. But it was a hard loss to see and to deal with because, you know, my kid plays volleyball, so that was hard to deal with when they lose. So um, go teams, you guys did amazing that night because that was your very first game, so that was good to see, and fun to see. I did a wellness committee meeting again, just trying to figure out the things that we're trying to do for our students. The best and the things that we need to look at for our students to make it just everything right for them as we look at the, the wellness part of everything that goes on within their lives and how we can think, just in our, within our schools, how we can make things better and stronger for them within our schools itself. Went to the Oceanside Chamber of Commerce with Ocean, it was Oceanside and Carlsbad together, it was a Chamber of Commerce. Met some great people, had some great communication. So it was great to just again, be out again, just talking to people, the different things of how, talk about how amazing our district is and just get people the the nobility and the, and the time to be able to hear about the different things that are going on. Went to a special ed meeting with different families and just again, hearing the needs and the different things that are going on, the way we can communicate with them better, the way that we can help and work with them. I also went to the DPAC meeting that we had this past, this month. So that was great again, to hear different things that we're offering, different things that we're doing, different things that we can do. I just asked if our families continue to show up to these DPAC meetings because these are again, these are the places where you can talk, you can hear, you can listen to different things that are going on. And so if you're not going to these things, you're not going to really know what's going on and what you can do to not only be there for your student, but how we can be there for your student. So continue to show up to those meetings as much as you possibly can. So just one more thing. Just thank you again for everything and our families for just being supportive of your students and getting ready to just be this new norm of whatever it can be. So thank you.
Thanks, Raquel, and Mike Blessing. Uh, you're on mute.
Yeah, there we go. No report tonight, I'll just echo Eric's condemnation, commendation to the women of the world who have suffered a lot and have made, made strides to get equity in this world with us men, but that's it.
All right, thanks, Mike. All right, um, I've been busy, a lot of the things Raquel said, I joined her on many of those, but um, I was involved in the two-way bilingual immersion meeting, and we're going to be hearing some more about what they came up with later on tonight. I also attended the Oceanside and Carlsbad Chamber of Commerce networking event with Raquel. I met lots of neat people. Um, I, I have been involved in the Special Education Task Force meeting, and this one we just had was focused on parents and what we can do to support parents that have students with disabilities. I did a couple of school site visits. I went over to Oceanside High School, which was exciting. They have several teachers that are working on board certification over there, which is even more fun. I also went to a music festival at El Camino High School. My son, I went as a parent too. My, my son was performing the standing bass, which was exciting to watch. Um, and I've been going over to South Oceanside Elementary on Thursdays. So to work in a classroom and really see different levels of our school. And I am excited to attend New Pirate Night tomorrow night at Oceanside High School with my son and family, see how that goes. And just like Raquel, I have to do a shout out to the fifth grade teachers at San Luis Rey, soon to be Pablo Talk Elementary. That Biz Town, they went, they did so much work and the students. I got there later in the afternoon and the students running businesses and checks and paychecks, and it was amazing to watch. But Richard Zimmerman, Victoria Mariani, Cheryl McKean, and their, their student teacher even participated, Alyssa Castro. So it was great. They did so much work to prepare those students. So thanks again, teachers, for taking that extra step. I'm hoping more teachers will want to look into Biz Town for their fifth grade students. Um, moving on to our next section, item three C, Oceanside Teachers Association. President Tiffany Cooper Ortega, I'm going to turn it over to you. Welcome.
Hi, thank you. Good evening, I'm Tiffany Cooper Ortega, and I'm honored to be able to report on behalf of the members of the Oceanside Teachers Association as their president. Next slide. Happy March, everyone, and happy International Women's Day. Here's to the strong women in our lives. May we be them, may we raise them, and may we surround ourselves with them. ODA members and leadership worked with OUSD on our ongoing committee work listed here and also began our internal association work to find the priorities of our bargaining unit members in order to prepare for our next bargaining session. Next slide. For this month, I would like to spotlight McAuliffe Elementary, but I want to tell you the story that inspired me to pick McAuliffe and specifically these educators. Recently, okay, it was this morning, but recently I was meeting with Dr. Vitali at an outdoor venue to discuss issues and celebrations throughout our district. And during our conversation, a woman approached our table and said that she recognized Dr. Vitali's voice from school board meetings. She shared that her daughter was a student at Krista McAuliffe, and she mentioned these two educators by name, and it prompted me to reach out to them. Talk about a pivot. So let me introduce you to Louis Huggins, a teacher at McAuliffe, and Jira Roma Santa, a counselor at McAuliffe. Mrs. Huggins has been teaching for thirty-eight years, and this is her thirty-second year in Oceanside, and all of those years have been at McAuliffe. When she's not inspiring young scholars at McAuliffe, she likes to travel, play pickleball, and so, and I'm just going to say, I'm still envious of her ability to transform a very plain tee shirt into this gorgeous EC Wildcat shirt. And if she wants to send one of those, one of those to me, I'll accept it. Ms. Roma Santa was inspired by her high school counselor to become a counselor and has been at McAuliffe for three years. When she isn't creating safe spaces for McAuliffe students, she loves boba and spending time with her one-eyed Frenchy named Thor. Isn't that adorable? Next slide. It wasn't just the names of these amazing educators that the parent shared. It was a specific example of her daughter's experience that touched me as both a parent and an educator. She told us that as is the case with many students and the isolation that students suffered during our pandemic, her daughter was having to learn how to comfortably and effectively interact and communicate with students at the school. Mrs. Huggins, the classroom teacher, noticed and reached out to the parent and suggested an early intervention using the school's counselor, Ms. Roma Santa. The student was invited to her lunch bunch where students learned strategies to process emotions and learn coping tools, and they get a special meal. And you know what? It was successful. The parent shared that her daughter is having a far more positive experience at McAuliffe, and the parent was grateful. And when I think of the implications of that social emotional intervention at that early age and the struggles that may have been avoided by this interaction, I consider it valiant. But for the teachers, counselors, and support personnel on Oceanside, it's just what they do. They not only meet the academic needs of their students, but they see the whole child and they meet those needs as well. So I want to say thank you so much to these two educators, as well as all ODA members who do those heroic things every day in the service to their students. And I'd also like to thank OUSD for prioritizing SEL and providing counselors at all school sites. Next slide. So quickly, I also want to spotlight the flexibility of our ODA members. I'd like to reflect on our journey since the pandemic hit in March of twenty twenty. When our teachers went home on that Friday unsure of what the future would hold for their students and their practice. At that time, in a matter of days, teachers pivoted from using educational technology in their classroom as a way to support and enhance their instruction to using that same educational technology to actually convey their instruction. Then those same teachers found a way to meet their students' needs while they worked in the classroom and while they worked at home as they navigated the ever-changing protocols and guidances. Teachers, being the superstars that they are, they met the next iteration of instruction head-on. And in the fall of this school year, ODA members returned to full in-person instruction with high expectations and quality instruction for their students. So now we find ourselves on the precipice of the next pivot point at the end of the mask mandate. As with the general population, you're going to find that we have members who are reticent because of concerns for their own safety and those of their students. And we also have some members who are excited about a step closer to normalcy. The important thing is that ODA members will continue to do what ODA members have always done. They're going to meet this new iteration head-on, and they're going to continue to make their students their priority. Next slide. And sadly, I want to take a moment to share that ODA lost two of their members in the last few days. I'd like to ask for a moment of silence for Reynolds Teacher Paula McAdoo and Mission Teacher Elena Morales. On behalf of ODA, I want to say that we hope, we want to say that may their memories be eternal. I'm sorry, I'm getting choked up. May their memories be eternal, and all who loved and worked with them find comfort in those memories. Thank you, guys, for your time.
Thank you, Tiffany. We do not have item three D, CSEA tonight. Dora is unable to share a report. So we're going to move on to item four, general consent items. I'll entertain a motion to approve.
I'll make a motion.
A second. Thank you, Eleanor. I have a first and a second. Any questions or conversation? All right, I'll call for the vote. All in favor of general consent items, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All right. Motion carries five zero. Moving on to our next item five, personnel. Item five A is approval of revised job description for our speech language pathologists.
Thank you, yes. This last job description was updated in two thousand and eighteen, and every so often, we do updates to increase accurate information with the descriptions for the job. When we do that, we look to industry standard as well as input from practitioners, which we have done to update the language in this particular job description that's for board approval.
Thank you for the explanation. I'll make a motion to approve.
I'll second.
All right, I have a first and a second. Are there any questions for Dr. McAdoo? All right, all in favor of approving the new job description for speech language pathologist, say aye.
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 All right, motion carries five zero. All right, thank you. Next item is item six, curriculum and instruction. Item six A is acceptance of the A through G completion improvement grant.
Dr. Lovey will turn on her screen and unmute her mic and present these next couple of items.
Yes, good evening, Board of Education. This is a grant that has been awarded to the district pending your approval to improve the outcomes for our high school students in achieving A through G completion rates. The A through G completion rates are those rates that allow students to be eligible to attend the UC system or the CSU system here in California. Your yes vote will enable us to accept these funds that can be used over the next several years.
I'll make a motion to approve. That's great news.
I'll second.
We have a first and a second. We had an early year meeting on this to answer, to ask questions. Are there any questions and comments before I call for the vote?
No. Go ahead, Mike. Go ahead.
Did, when there's an item where you had a public person had requested to speak on this item earlier and we couldn't find them, are they there now or?
I know, Mr. Wesson, I don't see them in the room.
Okay, thank you.
Nope, I don't see him either.
Okay. Compliments to everyone who worked on the grant. It's always good to have quote-unquote money coming to the district that's recognizing the good work we do. Thank you.
Uh, Mr. Wesson, actually, I did identify the speaker. If you still want to take that comment.
To the chair, I meant, but.
Yeah, let's go ahead and take it. They might have got mixed up with the five-thirty meeting. Let's see if they want to make a comment on.
Okay. Okay, they're being promoted now.
While we're waiting for them, I'll just say that this is extremely important, making sure that our high school seniors are getting through it. I'm so glad that we identified and went out for this grant and, and got it. So thank you, staff, for doing that. I hope that we can use it to, to, to make the world a little bit smaller for students that are walking in the high schools that are so big and give them some help getting to where they want to be.
Thanks, Eric, I agree. All right, I see Rosie. Hello, Rosie, how are you?
I'm good, how are you guys?
Good, we had you down for public comment at five-thirty. We had a special meeting, it's kind of confusing. Did you want to speak to this item, the A through G completion?
Yeah, actually, that was like the only item I was able to sign up for on my phone. And then I tried to also sign up for public comments at five-fifty-eight, and I'm wondering why that was closed.
All right, well, I'll let.
It seems like it's really difficult to try to speak on agenda items when there's only like one thing offered on the drop-down menu.
The public comment form closes at five forty-five before each of our board meetings.
Five forty-five, okay. Earlier today, I tried to get on for the public comment, and it just gave me one option, and it wasn't the, the public comment. It was on one of the agenda items.
All right, would you like to speak to this item?
Um, I wanted to speak to eight or the hate motivate, hate motivated behavior. Okay. Is that nine, item nine? I'm not sure.
Okay. All right, then, we will stay tuned because we're on item six day right now, and then we'll come back to you.
Perfect.
Thank you for your flexibility. I appreciate it. This is our last Zoom meeting, and then we're going back to in-person.
All right, good.
All right, thank you. All right, so I'm going to call for the vote. All in favor of approving the acceptance of the. All in favor of approving the acceptance of the G completion improvement grant, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries five zero. Moving on to the next item, six B approval of new ELD curriculum for the 2020
Are we frozen?
No, I don't think we're frozen.
I, it did stop for one second.
I'm sorry.
No prob, no worries. So this item six B is approval for new ELD curriculum for our six through 12 students. This curriculum was selected after a opportunity for our families to view the curriculum, our teachers and administrators to review it, and this will support the English language development of our multi-language learners. It'll be paid for out of our educator effectiveness grant and your vote will allow us to implement this new curriculum in the next school year in 2022.
I'll make a motion to approve.
I'll second.
We have a first and a second. Any questions for Dr. Lovey?
This is of course according to the California state standards, correct?
It is aligned to our California state standards.
Thank you.
Better be.
All right, see no further questions. I'll call for the vote. All in favor of approving item six P, say aye.
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 Motion carries five zero. Moving on to the next item. Item six C approval of benchmark workshop, writer's workshop grade K through five, English and Spanish.
So this is a very exciting opportunity that we have to provide writers workshop materials that are aligned to our core adopted benchmark materials. We know that writing is essential for our students to be prepared, to be successful in high school and college. And we know that providing these materials will give the tools to our educators with their talents to ensure that all of our students, those who are learning in English and those who are learning in Spanish are successful in writing. We, the note is that it is being used title fun, title two funds, we will actually be using COVID funds to purchase these materials for a cost of $244,000 approximately.
I'll entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion.
I'll second.
All right, we have a first and a second. Are there any questions or comments for Dr. Lovey?
Just said, I think that sounds like a great use of colored funds to get high-quality instruction to help students make up any gaps that they might have experienced because of, great job.
I'm looking forward to reading some of their writings. Maybe getting it published.
All right, super. All right, I'll call for the votes. All in favor of approving item five C, say aye.
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 Motion carries five zero. Moving on to item five D approval of the consolidated application for the 2021-22 winter release.
Yes, the consolidated application is the way that the California Department of Education allocates funds to local school districts. These funds include title one, title two, title three and title four programs. This application ensures that we are able to receive those funds for which we are entitled to and be able to enhance the education of our students, improve the outcomes for all of the, of our students, social emotional technology, professional learning. So your vote to approve this will allow us to receive those grants which we are entitled to.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Second.
Got a first and a second. Any questions or comments for Dr. Lovey? All right, seeing none, I'll call for the vote. All in favor of approving item five D, say aye.
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 Right, motion carries five zero. All right, moving on to our next item on our agenda, business, item seven. Seven A is the approval of resolution number 29. For the 21-22 school year, this is the sale and disposal of district-owned surplus personal property items.
Thank you, Dr. Begin. Education code authorizes the sale or disposal of district-owned personal property that is not required for school purposes. OUSD has a need to dispose of trucks and vans from the MNO department. District staff has reviewed the conditions and the estimated value of the items listed in table B and has determined that the value of the items listed exceeds $2,500 in current market value. It's recommended that the Board of Education approve resolution number 29 and authorize district staff to dispose of such property as recommended.
I'll make a motion to approve.
I'll second.
Any questions? And none, I'll call for the vote. All in favor of approving item seven A, say aye.
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 Motion carries five zero. Moving on to item seven B, the approval of resolution number 30 for the 21-22 school year. Authorizing use of an intergovernmental piggyback contract for the purchase of school furnishings.
Thank you, Dr. Begin. District staff identified the need for various school furnishings intended to provide a flexible and engaging learning environment for students and to facilitate both independent and collaborative learning spaces. In preparation for these purchases, district staff considered various vendors, eventually selecting the DEMCO contract and intergovernmental piggyback contract as the procurement method that is in the best interest of the district. It is recommended that the Board of Education approve the resolution number 30.
I'll make a motion to approve.
I'll second.
You have a first and a second. Are there any questions? Hearing none, I'll call for the vote. All in favor of approving item seven B, say aye.
Aye.
Right, motion carries five zero. Item seven C is a presentation and approval of a second interim financial report for the 2021-22 school year and resolution number 28 for the 21-22 identifying the amount of budget reductions needed in the 22-23 and 23-24 and authorizing reductions. So I'll turn this off.
Thank you, Dr. Begin. School districts are required to submit a second interim financial report as of January 31st each year to the County Office of Education. The interim financial report shows actual revenue and expenditures to date, budget revisions projected, ending balances and multi-year projections, as well as average daily attendance and cash flow projections. This evening I have a brief presentation of the second interim financial report. Okay. Tonight, we're going to be going over changes to revenue and expenditures, general fund unrestricted and combined comparison, components of the ending fund balance, assumptions, multi-year projections, fiscal stabilization plans, and then discussing concerns. Next slide. The first slide shows only the unrestricted fund and where we are now compared to first interim. Revenue on the first line remained consistent and expenses were reduced. However, expenses continue to be higher than the revenue thus resulting in deficit spending and contributing to our structural deficit. Next slide. This is the general fund combined comparison. This slide shows our budget when we combine both unrestricted and restricted funds. Again, the restricted funds are one-time monies. The one-time monies come with strings attached and they have to be used within the constraints of how they're awarded. We were able to meet our reserves this year with using some of these one-time monies to help us through our structural deficit. For example, paying expenses relating to staffing or major purchases. Next slide. Here we have the components of the ending fund balance. The ending fund balance moves in proportion to our expenditures. The biggest shift has been in this area with non-spendables being paid out to reduce it to a total of 360,032. Restricted funds are made up of mostly categoricals and increase and decrease depending on when they are received and spent. The committed funds are post-retirement obligations and are assigned as currently set for turf replacement and deferred maintenance. But because of our structural deficit, we will need to use the funds allocated for assignments to offset our deficit in the next two years. Whenever you put your budget together, you have to use multi-year projection assumptions and assumptions come from the County Office of Education. And those assumptions are the three that are listed here, your attendance ratio, your COLA and your declining enrollment. If you look at the first column for 21-22, we were anticipating an ADA ratio of 90.3. Because of all of the quarantines, it's actually come in at 87.86, which means of your total enrollment, 87.86 actually came to school. In 22-23, we anticipate that to go up to 91.3 and in 23-24, we anticipated to go up to 92.3. However, this could shift based on students coming to school. So this is something we don't have any control of, so we assume a very conservative number. Now we have our NYPD COLA revenue. This year we received 5.07%, next year we anticipate 5.33%. And then out year, you'll see that it dips back down to 311. This is where we're at right now with budget development. Things can always change depending on what the governor brings forth. One thing that impacts OUSD significantly is our declining enrollment. This year, although we had thought we'd have about 410 kids lost, we only had 110. But next year, our assumptions continue to be 410 and then 410 in the out years. This could also change. We could experience another year where we don't lose as many students. But you know what, I'm on the other side. If you could go back, I'm, thanks, I'm still right there. And so that's something we don't have control over, but it's something that we budget for conservatively. So if we have more kids come to school, that means that there'll be more money than we had anticipated. All right, next slide. So what's really important right now in schools all across California is that there is declining enrollment. And so this blue graph shows what declining enrollment looks like throughout the years. We're about right in the middle with where we are on this graph, not just OUSD, but I mean the state in general. So what's happening is we've had declining enrollment for the last few years, but our ADA has been consistent. And I'm going to show you that in, our ADA allocation for LCFF has been consistent. I'm going to show you that in the next slide. But the concern is that we don't have as many children coming to school in person and then with the challenges of independent study and how it's structured with all of the COVID quarantines, we have master agreements not coming back and we have homework not being turned in. Those are two really important components when we're being audited to be able to receive the funding and if we don't have those, then we can't collect the funding. Next slide. So this slide shows our changes in ADA. And so this explains, really we call, everyone calls it the ADA cliff in the fiscal world of education. So I'm going to walk through this table so that there's a clear understanding of why next year it's such a significant loss for Oceanside. So in 1920, that's our actual year. That was the year of COVID. Our actual ADA was 16292. So that's our ADA funding year and that's our ADA. But the next year, we're still in COVID. And so what happened was the state said in 2021, you're going to have a whole harmless year. You don't need to report your ADA, you're going to get the same money. So our funding year continued to be 1920. Same ADA. Now we're in our current year of 21-22. The rule for ADA is you're funded on your current year or your prior year, whichever one is greater. Well, because our prior year was 1920, that's what we got to be funded on again. So now you see that for three years, our ADA stayed the same, even though in reality we were losing kids. So what happens next year is that we either have to take current or prior year. Our actual ADA this year is 14532. We anticipate that going down again next year to 14502. Remember the rule is current or prior, whatever's greater, that means you follow that red arrow down. We're going to go from 16292 to being funded 14532. And that's what you call the ADA cliff. There is hope, there's legislation and the governor's proposing doing a three-year rolling average, which means Oceanside would be able to capture that 1920 year in our average, which would definitely help soften the blow for ADA. We could also have more kids come than we had anticipated. But I wanted to take time to explain this because in a slide that's coming up, I'm going to show the fiscal impact of this.
Dr. Norman.
Yeah.
Has our enrollment dropped as much as our ADA dropped over the last couple of years?
Our enrollment's been dropping as well. Hmm, but, but what hits us.
About 100 kids this year in enrollment.
Right, and overall in our ADA, we've lost over 1,700. That's in the next slide. But what's, what's hitting us is that we're at 87% where we're usually up at 94. And so even though maybe our enrollment hasn't dropped that significantly, our, our kids haven't been coming. Okay, we'll go to the next slide. So I'm showing you the multi-year projection and unrestricted. The reason that we want to look at unrestricted is when you're looking at structural deficits, you need to really look at your unrestricted because that's the money coming in from your LCFF and where you can make the most significant changes to your budget. You can see in this year and in the next year, we're able to meet our financial obligations. But in the third year out, you can see that we've got about a $13 million gap between revenue and expenditures, which then causes us the amount needed to meet reserves is 7.8 because that 13 in the middle, following the arrow, it gets bumped up. So that, and that helps offset, but we've got this amount needed to meet the reserve. And your reserve is always your 3% calculated on your combined summary. It's not just your unrestricted. So this is really important. But again, what could change this? A higher COLA could change it, a change in ADA could change it. So there's the, we could get more supplemental concentration. And so that's why third year can be a moving target. And so some people get concerned, well, how much do we take into consideration for third year for our district? Because the number is so significant, we really need to consider what's happening in the third year out. So then we'll go to the next, yeah.
Do we have a choice to change our projection so to, to not go down 400, say to go down 200?
You can. I get to meet with the county regularly and they really advise us to stay at 410 because if you estimate it less than that and it doesn't come in, then you've got to go back in and revise your whole budget because now you have a budget enough money to meet your expenses. So it's highly advised that you don't change your conservative assumptions. You want to keep them conservative because you don't want to be insolvent and you don't want to not have enough money for your budget. It's better to be over and then to trim back. Okay, going on to the next one, we have the combined summary. So it looks similar, a few more lines, but this is where you put your restricted together, you put your unrestricted together. You can see the, the next two years, we're able to meet our financial obligations. And then the reductions go to about 8.7. That's because we also have to add in non-spendables, which are about 360,000 and other commitments. That's our cash in our stores. You have to have your cash on hand and then 512, 500. And so when you add those in, you get up to 8.7 million that's needed for cuts in the third year out. So what's really important to look at as our next slide with concerns is our COLA is great. We're going to get close to 10 million more. However, when you look at that drop in ADA that I explained in the previous slide with how we went from three years of a consistent over 1,600 down to in the 1,400s, we lose a lot of money. We lose over $20 million. And then you take into account the increased costs of step and column, stirs and purrs. We have uncapped health and welfare, which means we have to budget in more. And then we have our increasing utilities and liability insurance. That means we're already starting the year off at a shortfall and that's with a 533 COLA. So I think it's important that we look at this as we move forward and think about what are things that we could do in order to have a stable budget. And so that goes to our next slide. Our expenditure adjustments need to be about 8.7 million and that's what's in the resolution tonight. We need to continue to align staffing with declining enrollment for fiscal solvency. We need to reduce in our unrestricted budget where we can. These are just some ideas for supplies, services and other operating expenses. And then we also have the opportunity to utilize one-time COVID funds to allow time to correct the structural deficit. You don't always want to use one-time money, but if it does allow us this next year to make adjustments that then will be ongoing, it would be significant. And the state's allowing this because they know the districts are up against this ADA cliff. And so Esser monies can then help mitigate that loss in revenue for all the districts.
But Dr. Norman, that, that makes the assumption that we, that we actually adjust our moving forward from there, right? Because that's just a bridge into another year where we'll still have the same issue.
That's a key point. We have to adjust. You, you had, that would buy us the time and then you've got to put a real plan in action or all you've done is, is kick the can. I mean, you've, you've not solved any problems. And if you're going to use this money to solve a problem, we need to solve the problem.
When we say services, producing unrestricted services, what are some examples of unrestricted services?
Services and other operating expenses. Like utilities, contracts, travel, just basically things that we would contract out for, we could reduce. Legal fees, all the things that really eat up a lot of your money that you could try to put a cap on as best you could.
I know we've done a really good job of kind of going around keeping all of our cuts out of the classroom. I know that when you do that enough and you start to run out of things to.
You do. So that's the end of my presentation, are there any more questions?
I don't have any questions, I have a comment. I I know those third-year assumptions are extremely conservative. They have yet to come to fruition, thank goodness, so hopefully we will not have to make those cuts the third year out, but I appreciate the information, it keeps us really looking at how we're spending our money to make sure we're supporting teaching and learning.
My my only comment would, yeah, I just have a comment too, it's not a question. Is that I would love for us to engage in this conversation as a workshop sometime in the next six months, I don't know if you all feel the same. It just feels like we're in this treadmill every year, and I keep thinking every year that we're like almost out of it. And then we're pulled right back in, so I I would love to not be on this list anymore. And if that means we sit down and look at, hey, what what are the things that we're going to have to do to make it off of the list of just a handful of districts that are down their third year out, because that list is much smaller in the state this year. I would love to sit down and talk with you all about that, figure out what we're going to do.
And that list with that ADA cliff may be actually larger, so it depends what happens. But duly noted, Eric, your request, so thank you. Are there any other questions, or can I call for the vote? Or actually, would someone like to make a motion?
I'll make a motion.
I'll second the motion, but with the same thing with like Eric, I want to talk some more about it. I feel like we're, I want some honest numbers in the third year out of what we're actually looking at and what things actually cost. So if there's a way that we can have that conversation and you have deep conversation about it, that would be great for me.
Okay. Julie's Julie's taking that in, Dr. Vitale, all right.
Yeah, I'm taking that in, but those the numbers that we gave you are the most honest, accurate numbers that we have. And one thing that I want to say about the enrollment projections, we've had a steady decline of about four hundred and ten students over the last at least five to eight years. That's why we use that number. This year, we didn't actualize that, and that helped our budget, so that's very helpful. We're always going to use the more conservative number for the reasons that Dr. Norman said. So just know that those numbers are based on what has happened in the past. And both the business department and HR are working right now on their projections for next year. They do those projections separately, and then they come together and compare those projections. And then that's what we base our staffing reductions on, and most of the re that most all of the reductions we'll be able to do through attrition, which means retirement. People do move or resign for other reasons, and that's a real focus of ours that we reduce on the natural and not in any other way. So it's a complex process that we're involved in right now, but we do use a lot of data for that. So I I just wanted to give a little bit more information on that piece, Eric, for the enrollment projections, and that's why we don't just change it down to two hundred to improve the budget. If that makes.
No, I no, I appreciate that, I just wanted to make sure that that was clear all the way around, that these are things that we are that are not moving. And so the things that need to move are what we can do. So I mean, when we talk about really making cuts, then like I think it would make that conversation real when we start talking about things getting cut. So that's why I'd like to have the conversation, because it feels very not real until we get stuck in the position where our ADA falls off a cliff, seventeen hundred kids, and we're funded at a eighty percent of who we are this year, that's going to be very real really fast. So.
Got it, thank you.
All right, see further questions, I'll call for the vote, all in favor of approving item seven C, say aye.
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 Do I have any opposed in here, everybody? All right, motion carries five zero. All right, moving on to item eight A. Turn it over. Board member Eric Joyce is going to read our resolution of number thirty-one proclaiming the month long celebration of National Women's History Month in March.
I am thrilled to read this despite my reading fluency at the end of the day. Thank you for the invitation. So whereas in nineteen seventy-eight, Women's History Week was first celebrated in Sonoma County, California. And whereas President President Carter issued the first presidential proclamation declaring the week of March eighth nineteen eighty as National Women's History Week. And whereas thousands of schools and communities began celebrating National Women's History Week by eight nineteen eighty-six, fourteen states had already declared March as Women's History Month. And whereas in nineteen eighty-seven, Congress declared March as National Women's History Month in perpetuity. And a special presidential proclamation is issued every year, which honors the extraordinary achievements of women in the United States. And whereas during Women's History Month, in the Oceanside Unified School District Board of Education acknowledges the additional determination, hard work and perseverance, women of color, LGBTQ identifying women and others must put forth to be heard and seen, and that these additional efforts are a result of inequitable institutional and systemic injustices. And whereas during Women's History Month, we acknowledge the paid and unpaid impact of women, whether serving in elected positions across America, leading the groundbreaking civil rights movements, venturing into unknown frontiers or programming revolutionary technologies, generations of women that knew their gender was no obstacle to what they could accomplish have long stirred new ideas and opened new doors, having a profound and positive impact on our community. And whereas women in the United States have also been leaders in the abolitionist movement, the labor movement, civil rights movement, the Me Too and Black Lives Matters movements, and many other movements creating a more fair and just society for all. And whereas despite these contributions and leadership, the role of women and women of color in the US history has been consistently overlooked and undervalued in the literature, teaching and study of American history. Whereas three of the five Board of Education trustees for the Oceanside Unified School District self-identify as women, and both members of the board leadership, president and vice president, self-identify as women. Whereas Oceanside Unified School District classified employees and certificate employee labor partner leadership self-identify as women. And whereas the Oceanside Unified School District selected Dr. Julie Fadali as the district's first woman superintendent in July of two thousand and eighteen. Whereas the Oceanside Unified School District is committed to and advocates for the educational equal educational, professional and social opportunities for women and girls. Now therefore, the Oceanside Unified School District Board of Education does hereby proclaim March first through March thirty-first twenty twenty-two to be Women's History Month in the Oceanside Unified School District. Be it further resolved that Oceanside Unified School Board Education strongly encourages staff, students and the community to observe, recognize and celebrate the culture, heritage and impact of women and girls to our country, our state, our city, and yes, our schools. Thank you.
Move approval.
Thanks, Eric, for reading all of that, I appreciate it. So we have a first and a second. Can I call for the vote, all in favor of approving item eight A, say aye.
Aye. Aye.
Motion, motion carries five zero, thank you. Next item, item eight B. Revision of Board Policy five one four five point nine eight motivated behavior.
Thank you, Dr. Regan, good evening, Board of Education and Dr. Vitale. The Board Policy five one four five point nine hate motivated behavior is being updated to bolster the governing board's commitment to providing a respectful, inclusive and safe learning environment. Some of the additions include looking at the motivators of prohibited behavior, celebrating diversity topics to be included in instruction for students and also staff development, and also ways in which students and staff be held accountable for violating the hate motivated behavior policy. This is in accordance with updates to CSBA policy, and we recommend that the Board of Education approve the revisions to BP five one four five point nine. Thank you.
We have public speakers for this item, I believe.
Yes, we do, we have two, Patty K and Rosie Higera.
We'll start with Patty. And get her promoted. Just a quick reminder, I know you guys have been to these meetings before and done public comment, but you have three minutes.
Mistake, yes.
All right, are you ready, Patty?
I pass, it was a mistake.
Oh, it was a mistake, okay. All right, so Rosie.
Okay, yeah, so I wanted to address. I was really surprised by Eric, by your comment, did you really say that you guys kept the cuts out of the classroom? It really doesn't seem like that's the case, it seems like all of your financial decisions to benefit.
Rosie.
Yeah.
You're speaking to item. You're speaking to a different.
No, that that's what I'm.
Hate motivated behavior, so I'm just reminding you.
Yes, okay, so it looks like you guys are coming up with a policy against hate motivated motivated behavior. But it's interesting because you're bringing in all of these lessons on morality. Let's see, gender, ethnicity, CRT, you're teaching the kids how to hate people of another color. And then you're going to punish them for this hate motivated behavior, which seems really hypocritical to me. If you guys are the ones that are introducing all this gender confusion and all of this these lessons on morality that have no place in the school. This should be up to the parents and the families to teach their children, not the school. And so the fact that we have like a whole, you know, staff, Dr. Jordy, that addresses these issues of multi-ethnic studies is really beyond me. I think we need to stop these studies, and I think we need to focus on the learning, the math, the science, the reading. Our scores are in the tank, they're terrible. We need to help the kids with this whole COVID thing as well. And I think that we will will do a lot better doing that. And I also I'm not surprised that our school attendance numbers are down. It looks like we're going to have to maybe pull our kids from the schools because our schools are failing our children, and it's very sad because there's millions and millions of dollars and the budget. You guys can't seem to handle the budget or put the emphasis on the children and their learning and their safety, you're introducing all of these ridiculous ideas and theories that have no place in this school. And so I I'm not surprised that parents aren't sending their kids to school. I anticipate a lot of parents pulling their kids out as well, they should, because our voices are not being heard or respected. I want to encourage you all to also go see Whose Children Are They premiering March fourteenth. It is a movie talking about what's going on in our school system and how our school boards and our teachers' unions have failed us miserably. Thank you so much.
Thank you for your. All right, so we had one comment on that item. I'll make a motion to approve.
Second.
First and a second, any comments? All right, I'll call for the I'll call for the vote, all in favor of approving item eight B, say aye.
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 Motion carries five zero, moving on to our next item, item eight C. Approval of revisions to Board Policy six one four six graduation requirements and standards of proficiency.
Yes, good evening, Board, a policy development eight C in addresses our graduation requirements, specifically the world language requirement. As we know that our eighth grade students in our two-way bilingual immersion program are currently taking AP Spanish language and culture at the middle school level. We have worked with the California Department of Education, the UC system and the CSU system to ensure that this update to the policy states that all students who are enrolled in that course and receive a C or better in the course will receive full credit towards their A through G requirements for admission to the University of California and CSU. And they will also be able to have the full high school graduation credit for world languages based on their passage of this course. This is very exciting news for our students and a great way forward for our two-way bilingual immersion program. Your approval will ensure that this occurs for all of our students.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Second.
All right, I've got a first and a second, my son will be extremely excited about this. He is in eighth grade right now in the pioneer class of dual language. So thank you for all the hard work you guys did on coordinating to get this to happen. All right, I'll call for the vote, all in favor of approving item eight C, say aye.
Stacy, I am so sorry to interrupt you, I believe we have a public comment on this item. So Anne, can you confirm, do we have a public comment on this item?
Yes, we do.
Oh, we do, okay, so hold the vote then.
Okay.
We have a first and a second.
Patty K.
No comment.
Okay, I'll call for the vote again.
Thank you, Patty.
Yeah, thank you, all in favor of approving item eight C, say aye.
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 All right, motion carries five zero, okay, I'll slow my roll, I'm sorry. I don't want to miss public comments, they're super important. Item eight D, deletion of Board Policy five one three two point two uniforms.
Yes, item eight D, policy development is the deletion of a board policy that is obsolete as we do not require school uniforms for students anymore in Oceanside Unified School District. So your vote to delete this will align with our current practices in our district.
I'll make a motion to approve.
I'll second, but and I would be remiss if I did not note for the record that sometime between nineteen ninety-three and nineteen ninety-six, my wife, along with I think Emily Whichman was on the board at the same time, Institute of the Uniform Policy, which was controversial at the time, but was thought to be needed at the time to make a statement and make some changes in Oceanside's image. So it lasted as long as it needed to last and be in place, and I think our image is in a good spot now, so anyway. Kudos to my wife, rest in peace.
Yeah, thanks for the history on that, I had no idea. All right, are there any questions or comments? All right, I'll call for the vote.
How does this affect the dress code in general, do we have a dress code for the district?
Doesn't affect it.
We we do have a dress code, Ms. Evans, and it's been updated under the leadership of Dr. Sparks and our student services in consultation with our site leaders to align with the best practices around dress code.
Thank you.
All right, I'll call for the vote, thank you. All in favor of approving item eight D, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All right, motion carries five zero, moving on to item eight E, approval of revision of Board Policies four one one nine point two five, four two one nine point two five and four three one nine point one nine, political activities of employees.
Thank you for reading that, Dr. Begin. Yes, this is to update our two thousand and ten policy to reflect current CSBA policy language, which includes recognizing the importance of employee political activity, voting and civic engagement, and reflects the Perkins versus Board of Education Township High School District regarding the prohibition against dismissing or demoting an employee due to engagement in constitutionally protected political activity.
Thanks for the explanation, I'll make a motion to approve.
Second.
We have a first and a second, any questions or comments? Right, all in all in favor of approving item eight E, say aye.
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 Motion carries five zero. All right, moving on to item nine, which is public comments on non-agenda items. I'm going to turn it over to Anne Given, so she can call up, I believe we have four public comments.
Yes, we do, I'll I'll call them up all at one time. Brad Tobias, Todd Madison, Patty K and Emily Whichman. We'll start out with Brad. We'll start out with Brad.
Good evening, Brad.
Hey, good evening. How's it going, everybody? Long, long time no see. I just want to, just want to say, you know, I'm glad that, that, that next month, everything is moving back to in-person at Chavez Middle School. You know, I think it's personally, and based on my comments in the past, it's, there's definitely, it's definitely should have been done a lot sooner. However, you know, it's going to, it's going back to in-person, and I think that's going to benefit the meetings, especially because, because there was so many, there were so many issues tonight, and it just proved that, that these need to be in-person. So thanks for, thanks for shifting gears on that. Really came in, in and I just, just watching, had nothing really prepared to say, but based on the presentation that was, that was presented a couple, a couple of minutes ago, a couple of issues came up. First, the decline in enrollment year by year. That is concerning, especially because we are in a military town and, and, and all students and our families that live on Camp Pendleton go to Oceanside Schools for the most part. And, you know, there's, there's always people coming and going on base. So, so that in, in and of itself is, is disturbing. Also, the budget is continually in the red, you know, month after month, you know, or, you know, quarter after quarter when, when these presentations, these presentations are held, they're, it's always in the red. And in twenty twenty-two and twenty twenty-three, the shortfalls are in eighteen-plus million-dollar range, which is, it's just alarming, to say the least. You know, if we're going to be spending money wildly, I would suggest buying better food for my, better food for the kids, my kids, I three that go to Oceanside Schools, and they always say that, that the school is terrible, almost to the point where they're not eating, eating lunch because it's that bad. As a parent, that's, 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 again, alarming. I'll, I'll put it like that. Basically, based off these, off these topics, you know, as far as enrollment and the budget, you know, I would give you guys an F. And that's just, you know, not, you know, and that's just, you know, you have an open heart, I know, open mind with it. And to Mr. Eric Joyce, you're, you're opening campaigning to run for city council. I just want to say, if you can't, if you can't run in your freshly area and effectively be on a board, on a school board, how are you going to be able to go ahead and be, be a productive member of our city council? You know, Eric Joyce, you, you and all the other, other, other board members, I think you could do a good job, you could do a better job. You are, you all are well-educated, and I think you just need to listen to us, because that doesn't happen very often, and that's proven month after month. And thank you for your time. Bye.
Thank you, Brad. Our next speaker, Ann.
Todd Madison.
There we go.
Hello, Todd.
All right. Thanks. Thank you very much. So tonight, once again, I'd like to talk about having a board that actually puts our kids' interests first over and above special interests and the adults in the district. As I've said many times before, our board has forgotten who voted them into office, we, the parents. The board is supposed to be the voice of parents in our district, but as we've seen so much in the past few years, they appear to be more the voice of employees and adults in the district, not so much parents and kids. We hear about how important our kids are, but if you want to see where someone's priorities lie, watch for how they spend their money. Tonight, we've seen the second interim budget, and it's grim. I'm glad we're able to use one-time COVID funds to cover up the fiscal mismanagement for another year. We wouldn't want to use those funds for something wild like educating our kids, would we? Are we in this position because we're spending too much on our kids? Trustee Joyce mentioned the budget treadmill we're on and wants off. That's great. But was he not in the October board meeting? We had that opportunity, and the board's response was to add almost ten million dollars to that deficit by unanimous vote, not to benefit our kids, but to further pad the compensation of people mostly into, well into six figures, including another fifteen thousand dollars for the superintendent and another nine grand for the president of the teachers' union. Exactly how is that putting the interest of kids first? And here we are, another nine million in cuts to the education of our kids. We see the priorities. For those watching these meetings, if you recognize this, if you feel education dollars should be spent on education, if you're a person who sees problems and wants to fix them, how about helping to fix this one? This year is an election year. It's time for parents to step up and take control of our board to make it work for our kids, not for special interests. Districts one, three, and four are up for election. The district website has maps. If you're not sure which district you're in, go to the Board of Education section. If you're listening to this and you care about the education of our kids, is it time to step up and run? I'm a co-director of the Oceanside Parent Association, and the parent association is planning on doing what it can to support kids-first candidates in the next election. If you'd like to discuss what running for board is all about, email us. The email address is oceanside.usd@parentassociation.net. That's oceanside.usd@parentassociation.net. And lastly, we all know that school choice is the real solution. Real power comes when parents can simply choose a different school if their board, their district, or their union is putting themselves first, not their kids. We need signatures on our petition to get it on the ballot. We're doing great so far, but we've got a big job ahead of us. Join us to help that by going to californiaschoolchoice.org and signing up to help, then getting out and getting signatures for the effort. That's californiaschoolchoice.org. Let's take back our education system, make it work for our kids, not for the special interests for a change.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Patty.
Okay. Good evening, everyone.
Hi.
I've met some of you personally and others I have not. I'm sure you're all really nice people. However, the short time that we've been attending board meetings, we've tried to explain to you how the school board and implementation in the school is going off track. And I was shocked when, that this resolution proclaiming the month-long celebration for National Women History Month was diverted when Eric read it to, you know, not women, but black women and LGBTQ. And Eric, your nod to one woman out of all the women in history was, was very woke. You, you people must understand that. Mike Blessing, can you pay attention, please? And so I want you to understand where you're going. I'd like to think you don't know, but we've been telling you. Also, Todd, the budget deficit is something in the months I've been watching Todd has been talking about, showed you facts and figures. You cannot possibly express surprise, and you're not doing anything but each meeting spending more and more money on school furniture, nine million, ten million on salaries, and then, and then say, what are we going to do? You can't, you just can't. I hope that you don't do that with your own budget. And I asked for a parents' report. That's not included on the agenda. I will ask again. I did notice on an audit report for June twenty-one, and that was, that was gone, that was not gone over, and there was no discussion on some of the discrepancies, I'm sorry to say. There was also a school accountability report card on, I believe it was last month's agenda, that it was a line item that was totally ignored as far as any kind of discussion, which would have showed you, you know, how ineffective the instruction is in the classroom our kids are not achieving. Also, in addition to the woke agenda, you are actually allowing the Boys and Girls Club now to hold, to come into the classroom in middle school and add more woke stuff on diversity and inclusion. We don't need any more of that. Also, you're adding LGBTQ discussions, I believe, as a recruiting tool. So parents out there listening, please be aware. Come March fourteenth, all parents and school board, you did receive an invitation to the premier.
Thank you, Patty, for your comments. Our last speaker tonight is Emily Witchman. Good evening, Emily.
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
Okay. I'd like to bring to the attention of the school board a group called the School Board Members for Local Control, and they met to ask Newsom to allow for, quote, "local control" when it comes, in this particular instance, to mask protocols among students and staff. And I think this is going to be an ongoing issue because of the different strains of COVID coming on. This group is organized by Andrew Hayes of Lakeside School Board, and it's made up of, of the different officials from the different school board districts. And he states, "The first priority of school board members is to ensure all students are receiving and have access to the quality of public education. School board members have a responsibility to advocate for our districts and communities. Local control allows us to do that by making decisions based on local conditions. Every district and community are different. One size fits all policy from Sacramento places unnecessary burdens on families, teachers, staff, and district administration." As of February fourteenth, there was nineteen school board members throughout the county who have pledged support for this local control. In our district, I can see several issues as far as local control. One is why is the school district losing students who are walking distance from their neighborhood schools like Del Rio, Reynolds, and Libby? I've never heard the reasons why they are leaving. We had a robust district at one time of twenty-three thousand students, and now barely fifteen thousand. We have plenty of housing since then within our district boundaries. Our charter and private schools all around us have waiting lists to register students, also academics. Will we see a rise in test scores, making sure our kids are getting the basics and working towards enriching education? How about joint land use with the city? What was the city going to do with the garrison problem? Property, if the district would have sold it to them instead of to a developer? How about Pacifica? Our tax dollars have been going to those properties to be used for our families and children and youth. The lack of playing fields in Oceanside is critical. Many sports teams have to look elsewhere to play. Future planning and out-of-the-box ideas could have served our children, youth, and families of Oceanside as they were meant to be, but are forever lost, the well-being of our community. Playing fields could be provided, could have provided fun and healthy activities for further generations. How about unity in our community? Why can't we have one flag for all the different groups? In proclaiming, in the resolutions that have been proclaiming month-long celebrations of different groups, I've only seen one flag claiming one group. Is this inclusion? Where are all the other flags? Why not just have the one? Why be hypocrites? Thank you, Board, for listening.
Thank you. That concludes public comments. Ann, didn't miss anyone, did we?
No, we're done.
Okay, great. So the next item on our agenda, we're almost done, is board or staff discussion. Anybody want, have any final comments for tonight?
Just two quick things. Shining the big, beautiful light on somebody who has done a great deed for our country doesn't diminish the work that others have done. And that's one of the biggest misconceptions about ethnic studies and the work and equity that we do, is that shining the light on somebody that deserves to be the, the light to be shined on does not diminish anything about what you have done and the work that you've done and the trials that you may have gone through. So I just want to say, you know, for everybody out there that, that wants to shine a light on somebody that's doing that work, do it. Don't let, don't let anyone tell you not to. The second piece is that we have a really exciting upcoming board workshop later in the month. So like Raquel said, I hope everybody shows up, we can have a great conversation about facilities.
And that will be in-person. Very excited. All right. No more board discussion or comments? Then I will happily adjourn this meeting at seven thirty-five PM. Thank you, Board colleagues. Thank you, participants. Have a nice evening.
Adios to Zoom.
Thank you. Good night.
Thank you. Night.
Good night.